We're on. Good evening. Welcome to the April 27th Board of Selectmen meeting. We have just been in executive session and now we're here for open meeting. Our intent is to meet with FinCom probably at around 6:30. I think actually everyone in here has heard the usual ground rules ad nauseam, so maybe the viewers have as well, so I think maybe we'll just agree that those will be the ground rules for tonight. As has been our habit of late, we'll take a few moments of silence to collect our thoughts or prepare for the meeting in any way that we might, maybe sбли gratitude for the opportunity to be of service. So again, welcome everyone. The agenda has been posted. Any additional items that anyone would like to have be considered this evening? Okay.
I was just gonna say one, you can take it during mine, but I did talk to Jimmy Mulcahy today and Columbia Gas wanted to do a road opening for a gas installation on Crescent and Main Street. And they were holding him up. He was holding him up because he needed some further information. I guess they've been talking to you. In any event, I talked to him, he's worked it all out, so if you want to put that into a vote tonight to allow them to do it.
They voted last week.
Oh, okay.
Depending on Jim's approval.
Okay, well Jim approved, so we're all set.
Is this the same one that's in here?
Yeah. No, that's a different one.
That's a new one?
Yeah.
All right, so we did vote last week?
Yes.
And that takes care of your concern?
Jim's approval, absolutely.
Beautiful. We're making wonderful progress already. All right, so really, potentially, we don't have too much on the agenda. Annual town meeting preparation, including preparing warrant articles. So I guess a couple things on that. Colleen has worked on an article for the website, for the town website to help educate people about the warrant article concerning a consultant for the public safety buildings. Are we feeling like that's ready to go?
What are you gonna do with that?
For the website, for the town website.
Oh, okay. So it's nothing to do with the warrant, just?
No. No, this is under sort of preparing for town meeting.
Okay.
So I'm just being an interested reader on that and I think the thing's a little long, but I think it's a really good opportunity to educate the public on what that vote is all about. I was actually thinking that if it were your decision to try to get the word out, that maybe giving that to the newspaper as well is another way to prepare for town meeting.
We can do that.
So I'll let you guys make the decision on that since I'm an interested citizen on this one.
I'm gonna have to wear boots.
And I wrote it, so I'm gonna recuse myself.
So that makes me in charge. Print it.
All right, okay.
Do you want a hard copy or do you want me to send you the file?
Maybe I'll have you email it to Deb.
Okay.
I'll give you the contact info.
And I'll email it to Dale to put on the website?
Actually, I mentioned it to Tara, so you probably could send it right to Tara. She'll know.
Okay.
Okay? All right, so does that take care of that? And thank you so much for your efforts. Colleen is a wonderful writer.
Including songs, I found out.
She is. All right, so under the category of preparing for town meeting, we have talked about having an open meeting for citizens to come in and learn more about any of the town warrant articles before town meeting from the selectmen's perspective. And last week, we had decided on Wednesday, May 6th, as the date to do that. Within 12 hours of setting that date, we learned that the asbestos remediation would be happening that night, so that's no longer a good night. So that's actually next week. Now... So what we know is that Wednesday night is no good. I think we know that Tuesday night is not good for at least one of the selectmen. That would leave the option next week of doing it next Monday. We have a meeting at noon with all hands on deck in preparing for town meeting. We could have another meeting that evening. The sole problem with that, I think, being that likely citizens wouldn't have the warrant delivered in the mail yet. We know Tuesday isn't any good. We know Wednesday isn't any good. So either Thursday or Friday, that Saturday, will be the town moderator's meeting at the library.
Did you confirm that? Because last week we said it was May 2nd.
Yes, and he and I had some conversations. That was originally scheduled for the first Monday, or the first Saturday that library does all the time. When the moderator took a look at this and recognized that people wouldn't have the warrant yet, he decided to move it back to the...
To the 9th.
To the 9th. And I will be able to be there that day. So... So we could do our meeting the 7th or the 8th. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on that. I know we've been a little skeptical of how many people were even gonna show up.
Thursday is fine.
Okay.
And I could probably, you know, I could just leave my office earlier instead of leaving it at 7 o'clock at night on Tuesday if you think Tuesday would work better.
You know, I think Thursday, people would more likely have had the chance to have received the warrant, hopefully, and have read it, so I think I'd go with...
How about at the regular meeting on the 11th?
Actually, I had considered that as well. And that might make some sense, albeit it would ask people for two nights that week, but by then, people would have read the warrant, they would have read the newspaper, and that isn't a bad choice from my perspective. I think we're open to spending more time, but maybe that makes a lot of sense for people that really have questions. What are you guys doing? Are you buying the...
We're following him and crossing out as he goes.
I think this is probably like the eighth date we've tried for this, but at least we're trying. I think I'd buy the 11th and do it...
Good.
Okay. I will get back to the newspaper. I will get back to... Well, actually, I'll get back to the newspaper. I'll get back to the studio. So we're gonna go for it at the 11th. Shall we say 6:30? Giving us a half hour to do our other business? Okay. So, sir, two Mondays from now, the 11th, the selectmen will be available at our regular meeting to fill people in or to answer any questions they had about town meeting warrant articles.
And the moderator's sponsored meeting is, in fact, may not?
Has been changed from the 2nd to the 9th.
Okay. Well, I have a couple corrections to put in, but that works.
Okay. Everyone all right with that? All right. So do you... Knowing that FinCom will be in and there'll be further discussion, do you have a... You want to go over warrant articles?
Well, the warrant is complete with... I have one question and it's complete. Article 22, sale of land. I just want to determine, is the intent to sell all of the parcels of town-owned land in that area subject to two building lots? Is that the way? All of the parcels?
No.
Or then the article...
I can get you specifically what the two lots are.
Did you say two five acre lots?
Or just two lots?
No, there's two parcels.
Right.
That total, I think, 17 acres. The total of the land, I think, is 35 acres.
Okay. So just the two that are 17? I just need to... I can describe them by assessor map and lot. I just need to know which they are. That's the two. So those will go into the article. And other than that, I have the language provided by town council, so that will go on. Again, there's... You did not vote on that last week, so it would be a vote required for that.
Do we have somebody appraising it?
Well, yeah, but we're not gonna get... We'll probably not get that ahead of the, you know, ahead of the town meeting. And we would need a plan anyway, and we're certainly not gonna get that ahead of the town meeting. But it would just be those two parcels.
Well, I thought we had to have an appraisal, had to have the appraised amount in the article.
I believe we do. I believe we have to have a solid appraisal amount in the article.
I think that's fairly important for people to vote on.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna get it appraised.
Subject to fair market appraisal. We are gonna get it appraised. I just don't have any... I mean, I don't have... I mean, I can't, you know, get knocking down the door quite that quick. They're not that fast, especially in commercial appraisals.
Well, we've got somebody that we've used. You knew their name, right? They did the messenger.
Yeah, Mark Truran is a fellow that's done a lot of local property... Three local properties in the last little while. Churchill, Parsonage, O'Neil, so...
What's his name, Truran?
Truran. T... I believe it's T.R.U. Truran A.N. I can get that to you.
To me, I will... You can use language that says that, you know, based on a fair market appraisal, it doesn't necessarily have to have a dollar amount. I mean, we would have a dollar amount by town meeting, but we may not have a dollar amount by the time this goes to print. And it would be... The... The arti... The motion would carry the actual amounts. But I'll check and see if we can get somebody to do that. The language is all there, that's good. And the other thing that's not in the... Is the solar bylaw yet, but that will go in. Again, I just, in order to save time in bringing this out and not have it huge. That's all been approved and hearings are done and so on. So that is the only... The sale of land requires a vote and the other, which I assume you'll wait until the FinCom comes in, is the debt article. That's not voted on as well. And actually, the following article after that is the 104,000 for the fire department equipment. That wasn't voted on either, depending on how the debt article is structured, that may get passed over.
All right, so keep an eye on that. Remind us after FinCom that we vote on that. The... I'm gonna recuse myself on the land article. Are we ready to vote on that?
Yeah.
I... Well, I'd actually like to see it before I vote on it.
You know, I'm just... I'm gonna sit below. I would just remind everyone that I think FinCom is expecting to send this to the printer tomorrow, so...
Their, I believe, Monday. Their deadline is looming. I mean, the language of the article just simply states that we, you know, the town will vote to sell two parcels of land subject to there to be requirements, because it's all laid out in the law and it's right there. And I mean, we've covered everything. It isn't real complex.
And you have something that was written?
I have... Town council has written it already. I just have to fill in the blanks.
And it limits to two building lots?
That will be a restriction that I'll add in, yes, that not to exceed two buildable lots.
And for the warrant, we won't have the appraisal, but we will definitely have it for town meeting.
I hope so. Well, I'm gonna... I'm gonna try to force somebody in. I think we could probably get it by then. We've met all the other requirements, which are with their restrictions on it and so on and so forth.
It also is a word that proceeds from the sale going to the capital stabilization account.
Okay. That's the other restriction. Okay. Do I vote on it generically at that, or you want to wait until... I mean, you can vote on it later. It doesn't matter. Just either way, I mean, I'll have it put together.
I don't think there's a vote on it later. I... At least when FinCom was here last, my understanding was they expect...
This was the end night for it?
This what?
This was the last night for it.
Right.
Right, because they've gotta go to the printer at some point pretty soon, so...
And my understanding was that was tomorrow. Maybe that's changed.
Okay, so we vote on 201?
I'm recusing myself, so 201.
Did we... Did we vote on your Comcast thing? We did?
Yeah.
Did you talk about... I talked to her again afterward.
Yeah.
She needs another dollar amount article or something.
No, no, that goes into the motion. It'll all be in the motion.
And she's comfortable with it?
She said she was absolutely fine with the whole thing. Yeah, you voted against it, just in case you forgot.
Yeah, but didn't there was some confusion about there was a second article?
Yeah, Dale had made that and Lauren Goldberg, our town council, was fine and in fact wanted to put it in as part of the motion. And Barbara also wanted to do it at that point.
The actual funding will come in the motion, not in the article. You know, in other words, the article establishes the enterprise fund and in the motion, there will be a dollar amount affixed to it to fund the enterprise fund for...
So basically, Article 26 and 27 melded into one article?
Correct. One is... One was deleted.
I mean, one of them really was never in. We had never voted that. Dale had sort of inserted that in case we wanted it. Okay. Let's see. Recognizing we'll have more discussion when FinCom comes, anything else on the warrant articles?
Other than the debt article, that pretty much completes it. Special warrant, special law warrant is done.
And actually, the next two items are fiscal 16 budget discussion and discussion and vote on the debt repayment. I don't know if there's anything... John, you want to say before FinCom comes in or just wait for that? Okay. Public safety buildings planning, anything new from anyone on that?
On hold... I mean, it's on hold until we get to town meeting with the article.
Okay. Peg access preparations, nothing new? Solar ongoing projects?
Still with town council, I got a call just when I was leaving from... eating holy from one of them and town council hasn't gotten in touch with it. When I talked to him last week, he was... So I...
You would have expected to hear from him by Friday, right?
Pardon me?
You would have expected to hear from him by Friday.
All right. Town government vacancies, same old story. There are openings. There are the opportunity for write-in candidates. Finance committee, especially a planning board. In July, there'll be the appointed committees and some openings there. People that want to get involved, please, please consider doing so. I think any of us are glad to talk to interested people about that possibility. Future Board of Selectmen meetings. Let's see if we've got this worked through. We will be meeting this Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. in executive session. We will then be meeting a week from today, May 4th, at noon. Town moderator, town council, department, financial department heads will all be here. That'll be our dress rehearsal for town meeting. We are canceling the May 6th meeting and then our next meeting after that will be Monday, May 11th at 6:00 p.m. Sound right to everyone? Okay. We're up to town moderator. I don't know if that's a promotion or not. A town coordinator report.
Yeah, essentially, I covered that other thing. It's been mostly all the warrants at this point. The... You touched on the asbestos remediation will get done next week. That's scheduled. That is covered by insurance. They're coming in Wednesday with carpet sampling, so when the carpet samples for that room, you know, they have a raft to pick from.
And they're pretty sure that's a one-day thing? I mean, they're gonna do it and we'll be able to be open the next day?
The asbestos remediation, yeah. They assured us they'd be done and out by the time. They just need access to the building and someone to lock the building up at the...
So after they do that, what's next for that room?
Then they're gonna repair the room with the damage that was done in the room. There'll be new carpeting put down and, you know, replacing all the ceiling tiles and all that. And we'll be ready. We'll be good to go. Then it will be decision time as to whether you want to move the treasurer's office back in there or split that into two meeting rooms and keep the treasurer's office where it is.
What if... They're completely taking the tile out of there?
Yeah, they're lifting all the tiles.
All the floor tile.
Yeah. I actually learned something in the process, that if you have those inlay tiles, generally speaking, any of those that are nine-inch square, because they only did those, they're mostly all contain asbestos. And, you know, and generally, they're not a problem, you know, if they're... You know, if they're not disturbed and, you know, or cut up in any way, shape, or form. But in this place, they were damaged and obviously they have to go.
Now, how about the new problem with the roof?
They're coming back to... There's a couple of things. The roofers that did the job last year are coming back on their dime and they're going to replace all of the... Continue the over the drip edge with a little bit of style. Plus, there's a... And I think this is where the problem happened, where the two buildings joined together. There's a problem up there that I think was missed the first time around. Again, they'll be back sometime during the good weather to fix it. And we don't have any dam... Danger of getting any water up there because the place where it was actually leaking is probably a foot and a half off the roof. It was just that the ice dams got that big this winter. So we'll be sealing that flashing and hopefully we'll have no more problems.
Okay. Correspondence?
This is from the Plymouth County Convention and Visitors Bureau. It's just a letter letting us know that many of our... Much of the money that comes into Plymouth County comes from tourists.
Comes from?
Tourists. Tourism.
Got it.
This is an invitation to the Plymouth... I'm sorry, Plimpton and Carver Triad luncheon at the Upland Sportsman Club on May 21st at noon. They're gonna have hand vegetables, scallop potatoes rolls, coffee and dessert, $7 a person. If you want to go, you have to RSVP. This is Old Colony Planning Minutes and Agenda. This, I guess, is a new request for a road cut from Columbia Gas to install two wire test stations at Crescent Street and Main. So is this new?
Mm-hmm.
So they're doing two things at the same location?
Was the other one Center and Main? Or was it Crescent?
The other one is Center and Main.
Oh, Center and, okay. So this has to go to...
Crescent and Main was the other one, the one that was voted on.
That's... This is Crescent and Main?
Yeah, it's a different request being done.
Okay, so then we need to vote that we're in agreement, as long as Jim Mulcahy is in.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
This is from the Old Colony Elder Services. If we want to nominate somebody to their Board of Directors, we need to let them know on town letterhead by May 22nd. This is a letter from a town resident asking for help in the form of a pass to the dump. It is not recommended by the Highway Department. I guess they passed it on to us in case we wanted to consider it, but they do not want to set a precedent of giving this out.
They're looking not for payments, but to...
They're looking for a free dump pass or a reduced dump pass. They've had a hard time this year and...
As I understand it, the Highway Department has offered sort of payments over a few months to help with that. I mean, there's a part of me that would love to be as helpful as possible. I think this is a very slippery slope and as much as we'd like to help, I think we get ourselves into a pretty big problem here. I would have to agree with the Highway Department that it's to be very careful territory.
Yeah, I had a little thought and thinking, well, maybe we could have some kind of lottery. You know, we're giving some senior citizens aid for tax, real estate tax payments in the form of work off. Maybe do something, but then this... It's a can of worms and I think that you'd have to have a means test and it's too much.
So we're feeling no action?
And these people are not senior citizens. So you can't go to C.O.A. or something.
Sure. We're finishing up. We may just go into recess for a little bit. We will look forward.
That's correspondence.
All right. So we had an executive session. We had two executive session minutes to approve. I forgot, so we'll do it Wednesday when we're joining executive session. We do have minutes for the open session from last Monday... No, last Wednesday. Did you have any amendments to the minutes? I had a few odds and ends.
Punctuation stuff there. Are those boards or posters? The signs?
No, they are... I noticed that. That should be posters.
Okay.
I did find a comma right...
It's awful.
She does... You know, I think we mentioned this once and all. Kristin does wonderful minutes and Colleen and I probably need a little bit of psychoanalysis to goof around with the odds and ends. But we obviously get some kind of pleasure out of this.
I have punctuation on the...
Why don't I give you my things? Let's see. I think that comma's okay. So I had the posters.
This says proposed proposal and I'm just thinking, just take up proposed?
I was more lenient on that one. All right. Anything else on that? Wow, I think that's all I had.
Oh, just... Did we mention that the... Does the town meeting need to be posted as our meeting?
Yes, you need to post a meeting for the town.
Right, so I thought we had mentioned that.
You know, actually, I mean, we can go ahead and do it. I believe that the Board of Selectmen don't have to post for... We're starting early. That's why we have to post. All right, we'll make sure that... I'll make sure that happens. Kristin and I will make sure that happens.
So do you want to add it to the minutes because it was mentioned then or just deal with it?
Yeah, sure.
And I had something here. Says asbestos was found in the ceiling tiles. I would just...
That's now wrong.
Yeah, I would just take it that asbestos was found. So just take that in.
So I make a motion that the April 22nd minutes be accepted as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so FinCom says they need maybe 20 minutes. We can go into recess. All right, so FinCon says they need maybe twenty minutes, um, we can go into recess unless someone has something else.
Would you like to sing?
No, thank God.
Oh, we could live it up Board of Selectmen, can you sing? Can you sing?
No, but I can play the Cranberry Box.
You and Brian, we can have a duet.
So I, they said twenty minutes, maybe it'll be a little bit more, but why don't we plan on being back here in twenty minutes? Okay, welcome back, everyone, we've been in recess briefly and we are now meeting with the Finance Committee. Hello, Finance Committee, welcome back.
Uh, I guess I'll just summarize then, again, we have not yet voted the budget, though we've just gone through it line by line. I think we'll skim through it one more time, I'm sure Barbara has been an enormous help catching, catching, helping us out. We ended up with a budget that had been, not the final number that's not voted, but of nine point nine million, seven hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars. Um, and it's about...
Well, it's gonna change because of that.
It's gonna change, so things are gonna change.
No, really, no.
Yeah, because of...
But it's not...
Oh, it's a... Yeah.
So we're about two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars under the levy.
Which is...
Using about, well, right now, we have, the way it's written on this piece of paper, it says we're using about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of, um, C.P.F. However, we...
It's gonna be more like four.
Yeah, it's gonna be more like four hundred thousand, so we want, we're gonna recommend paying the interest, dentit interest payment out of C.P.F. However, we've vote, we've decided that we're going to hold off until next town meeting to recommend or not recommend paying off that full debt amount. We spoke to Barbara, it doesn't affect the number very much, if at all, voted next town meeting, and we just feel like we need, it's, it's too short notice, we need a little more time to look at it, make sure that we don't see it adversely affecting anything else.
So what you're proposing to pay off is the dentit interest, which is roughly?
Eighty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars, roughly, roughly.
Eighty-two?
Yeah, eighty-two thousand, two ninety-four.
And likely we'll pay the balance back, next, the way it was proposed to us, we would be paying that payment in July and the balance in June, and instead, if we do it the next town meeting, we'll be paying it in July, so it's a month, it's a month difference, but it gives us time, this was, this idea came to us on Thursday by email. Tonight's the first night we've been able to talk as a committee about it, and we just would like additional time. And it's a minimal difference if we do it this way versus doing it over two town meetings. So that's our recommendation.
Do you, do you think that we shouldn't let the town decide the tax rate?
It's our recommendation.
It's our recommendation on your warrant article.
Yeah, but you can't, it can't even be a warrant article without you recommending it. So you're playing God here.
Uh, I, I take exception to that, strongly, okay?
Pardon me?
I said I strongly take exception to that.
Well, good.
We are trying very hard, we've been working very, very hard, difficult budget year, um, to make sound decisions and having, making a decision to spend five hundred, more than half a million dollars when we've had tonight, you know, hour and a half to finish the budget, adjust some revenue numbers, it's asking too much of us as a board of volunteers to know that that's a sound financial decision and if the difference is one month's possibly interest on the balance, and Barbara said it might not even be that, we're talking a very minor amount of money and we will put it on the warrant next year if we can make that decision.
And it doesn't, it, it won't change what the tax rate's gonna do this year, it'll be the same either way it's voted. We, if this came to us a month ago, we might feel comfortable recommending it, as it is now, we do not feel comfortable recommending it.
Barbara?
Um...
Some different conversation you and I had with that?
Well, the conversation you and I had, your, your schedule was predicated a little differently than this was. When I broke it down to what I've given the board tonight, we couldn't pay six hundred and five off prior to the payment going into an account next May, in May of sixteen. So it's making the payment to pay off the, the school like June 1st of sixteen. I don't know if there's a huge difference in anybody's feelings, whether it's June 1st or whether we pay it actually July 1st and pay the whole bond off there, because the amount that's on...
Oh, next year, Barbara.
Next year, July 1st of sixteen.
So you can't be paying this year no matter what.
Uh, it's, five hundred and sixty-three thousand is going to be the payment roughly, whether it's June 1st or July 1st, because the way I computed that is, there are ten principal payments of five hun, of fifty-five thousand dollars each, and then on the seventeen worksheet, the first interest payment was the other thirteen oh sixty-two, and that's how I came up with the figure of the five sixty-three for that payment, because we couldn't pay that in like August or whatnot, because there wouldn't be sufficient money in that capital stabilization account to do it, and that's why I laid this worksheet out. If you want me to go over it very quickly, this work...
No, I don't need it for me.
Okay. So, do you, do either of you want me to...
Yeah, yes, yeah, I'd like you to go over it.
Okay, uh, what I did was I went back to day one with the capital stabilization account. The first payment we put in, the first year expenditure we did, uh, was for a highway truck. In fiscal fifteen, we paid two items, the hundred and four, six ninety-two for the leases and sixty thousand for water treatment plant, plus the deposit that will be made in May fifteen, in May of fifteen this year is five sixty with some interest we've earned on it, brings us to a figure for June 30th of fifteen of nine twelve that we could spend. And all the items that the, everybody's agreed to, the lease, the hot box, paying off the town barn and the school roof, and the current debt and interest, and the dentit principal is four hundred and two thousand, you take that out of the nine twelve, which leaves us at five oh nine eight twenty-four. There isn't sufficient money there to pay the debt, dentit bill in full. If we wait till June 1st, there will be another hun, five hundred and sixty-nine going in, and that's why I put it on here is June 1st.
Of sixteen.
Of sixteen, in the fiscal year in which we're going to be voting in a couple of weeks. So, whether we do that or whether we wait until the May sixteen of sixteen annual town meeting for fiscal seventeen and pay it off July 1st instead of June 30th, I think that decision has to rest between the two boards and not made.
But either way, just so I understand and anyone who's listening understands, either way, it does not affect the tax rate?
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't affect the amount we're paying, it doesn't affect anything, the only thing it does is gives the Finance Committee a little more time to look into this, to make sure that there's not, which we don't think there is, but to make sure that there's nothing detrimental in doing this, it gives us time to make, give good advice to the town.
You're saying it doesn't affect the tax rate because, because you're gonna make this year's payment out of it?
Yes, yeah, so we're gonna make it out of capital, we're gonna take it out of capital, so it reduces that. The, the, the difference being, if we pay it in May, in, is the interest rate on this bond that we're talking about is of July 1st, sixteen goes to four point seven five percent, and there's no way in any bank right now that that money can make that much interest by sitting in, in any type of an investment account.
But if we pay it on July 1st, we're not gonna recover that interest rate.
I agree.
There's, there, and I, you know, you guys have decided, so it's, it's not a debate, it's just a, uh, a fact. It's nothing magic about when we put the money in to that stabilization account, there's nothing that says it ha, it has to wait until the following May, and so you could have put, you could put sixty thousand in there July 1st and save that four point seven five percent interest for a year, but, and that's only, uh, what is that, twenty-five thousand dollars, so...
So in this scenario, what happens to Article 12?
This Article 12, I believe, will still need to be in the warrant to pay off the town barn and school roof. If we were going to do both, it would be, have to be a combination of those two, 'cause we still need the article to pay the town barn and school roof.
And where are we, where are you going, what is the debt and interest, the seventy-four thousand?
The seventy-four thousand represents thirty-five thousand for the last payment of the highway equipment that we currently have, and it also recommends about thirty to thirty-five thousand for principal payment on the transfer station in the town hall renovations that were done a couple of years ago and the interest on both of those.
Now, why wouldn't we be better off to pay some of Sober Lake, so the tax rate gets lowered?
Than these two?
Yeah. See, those, those two there can be respent in the budget.
No, those are both coming from capital exclusion, capital upline.
They are debt excluded?
Uh, the, no, those two are not debt excluded.
See, see my point there? If you, what I had suggested is we make a payment, or a partial payment on Sober Lake's debt, which is debt excluded, which would lower the tax rate. Yeah, now, these two here, have you counted on respending it in the budget, the thirty-five, the last payment on the truck? Have you counted on that in the budget, do you know what I mean?
No, that brings them under the levy limit, they haven't counted by increasing any amount.
So it's, so it's in, in the excess levy? And it seems to me you'd be better off to pay off something that would lower the tax rate, and there's no chance of it being respent.
The excess levy is gonna reduce the rate anyway.
Yeah, but, but it's there, so it can be spent.
Could I, could I just say that Monday night, we're this close to voting this budget, we're not, it's too late to make these kind of decisions and speculations and things, we are comfortable with the budget, we're recommending.
By the way, the explanation to anyone listening, we have to vote the budget tonight and send it to the printer. It's not like we have another week or two to play with these numbers and research things.
That's a, that's a pretty simple switch. What's, what's the tax rate gonna be now, you know, what it's gonna go up, five percent?
I don't know exactly, because the numbers that I got from the assessor's office through an email, I now understand are not a hundred percent accurate, so...
But they're not a hundred percent final.
Yeah, they're not final, so I don't know what they're gonna be, um, and we, we, they gave us a letter to reduce their overlay account and I had, I didn't see that until I was in there tonight, so I don't know where it's going to be exactly.
But are we still talking the five percent that we were talking last week?
In that area, yeah.
So we're stocking five percent and we're taking more money out of the capital stabilization account? Right, than last week, or two weeks ago, whenever it was?
If we pay the dentit definitely want us to.
Pardon me?
If we pay the dentit definitely want us to, otherwise we're, we're worried.
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm off from that, I'm just, I'm just trying, what, what my goal was is to try and keep the tax increase at two and a half percent and not five percent.
John, I think we're, again, I think that's a, a shell game that we're playing with people. I think that there's no way, without playing all these little games, which you just can't keep doing it, putting all these little Band-Aids on this big balloon that's above the top.
If you just wait a minute and think through before you talk, what, what I'm doing is I'm...
We've been talking for two hours now.
I'm dealing, I'm dealing with stuff that is debt excluded.
I understand.
So, so it can't be respent.
We understand what you're saying, we're comfortable with the budget.
If we keep, if we keep the increase to two and a half percent, we're increasing the room under the levy, which we, we're hesitant to do last year, because exactly what's happening, we have the capacity and we're, we're just making that capacity bigger and bigger and bigger, which is not necessarily, um, a good idea, to me.
This is something you guys, over the next year, will keep on the radar screen, um, with the opportunity to think through ramifications that, I mean, I think this is a great idea, I, I also wish we had had it a few weeks ago and I am always concerned about sort of hidden ramifications that we haven't thought through. I think collectively, between this board and the Finance Committee, we can keep working on this and, um, it would be great to, uh, if we're feeling good about it, we'll bring it to fruition next year. All right, um, so what else do you need from us this evening, if anything?
Yeah, the votes on the capital purpose funding are the, are gonna be spent on capital purposes.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Well, the, the boards have to all vote to spend money out of, um, capital perhaps, purpose fund. So, I don't know if you've already taken those votes or not, so the articles are funded out of capital purpose?
I think we have voted on all...
You've already done that?
On all the articles except...
Is there word in this? Uh, well, the, the debt article, which is what Susan's talking about.
Okay.
So if you just list what you're taking out of capital purpose, you know, the amounts for what they are, and make a motion on that, then that would be your vote.
So, but we were, the fire truck needs for a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars. Asphalt hot box for seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars. The program manager for the buildings for twenty-five thousand dollars. Paying off the town barn and the school roof for ninety-nine thousand, zero two eight. The dentit interest line in the budget at seventy-four thousand dollars, and the dentit, debt exclusion line at eighty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars, a total of four hundred and two thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars.
You guys have voted yes on all of those?
You vote, they vote.
Okay, um, so that, um, my motion would be that we pay for those out of?
Capital purpose.
Capital purpose fund.
Second.
Make that motion?
Discussion, I still, I've got a, and Barbara, maybe you're the one that can, the eighty-two thousand, if, two weeks ago, right, we were talking about, um, spending five hundred thousand of our levy.
Six hundred and five thousand, six oh five, or whatnot, six oh five was the figure you were working with before.
No, I'm not talking about the school loan, I, I'm just, ha, in two weeks, have we spent another eighty-two thousand? And we're getting that by taking the debt exclusion...
No, we're reducing the budget, we haven't increased the budget, is that what you're asking?
So, so the, the...
We didn't increase budget lines by eighty-two thousand dollars so we could take out even two thousand dollars, so that's not what's happening, is that, if that's what you're asking?
Yeah, that, that is the question.
No, we made minor adjustments to a couple of budget lines, uh, in the...
What they, what they basically did by taking that out of capital stabilization, they increased the difference between what was available and the levy limit to give us more of a gap and bring down the tax rate by taking it out of capital stabilization.
If it's not spent at town meeting?
I mean, if people don't vote to increase lines? Well, I, I think we're gonna make it clear to everyone that if they vote to increase lines, they're voting to increase their taxes more than we've already said have, which is already a good size increase.
'Cause, I mean, basically, the, the eighty-two thousand and the seventy-four thousand were not on the table to come out of capital stabilization.
Seventy-four was always on...
That wasn't?
Yes, for us, it was always there. Yeah, the only change we've made is the debt exclusion for the dentit, so...
And that's to try and lower the tax rate, like you guys brought to us.
And if anything, I think the adjustments we made today probably were pretty much neutral overall.
Not a little down.
Down, if anything.
Yeah.
Uh, so, any more discussion on the motion? So the motion is to, um, authorize the money from the... So the motion is to authorize the money from the list of things Susan gave us to come from the Capital Purpose Fund. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All abstained.
Okay. All right. And what do you need from Dale?
The warrant. Yeah, and also, in our figures, in the special town meeting warrant, the article of the money transfer. I just wanted to be, I'd asked if that article, the line being named appropriately for the budget.
I'm sorry, which one?
Wasn't changed. I've left them on a little bit. The, the article that's transferring...
The $5,000.
The $10,000 into the town buildings and grounds.
I want the question.
Line or whatever the profit title is.
I think the budget is not titled correctly. We had, we talked about, does that a reading out, will it change?
Land, 610, veterans benefits and, oh, you mean, it was land and building account, that's right. You did mention that in the last one. In, in fact, you...
That's what I gathered out. Building and grounds maintenance.
We'll change it this time.
All right. You have that.
Yeah.
You have the land article language.
I gave them, yes.
There was one article that we had to vote on. Was that the capital stabilization that we just did?
The one you just did vote on, which was 2-0, I guess, the, the debt article. That's the only article you hadn't voted on.
All right. So that is Article 12. So I make a motion that we, or, we, we simply vote on whether we're recommending Article 12.
We just don't have the line, we haven't received it, so.
Which, which?
Article 12.
It's in the warrant. I gave you the copy of the warrant. It's in the warrant. It's the only red article left in there.
All right, so that...
It just, it, it's, it's very basic as far as the article goes. The motion will be the listing of all of the items that are coming out of capital purpose.
We have the American one.
That's, the, that Article 12 is only for the town bond and the school roof. That's all that is to pay down the debt. The others are other articles that are in there and the motion will include where the source of money is.
Or in the budget.
Yeah, or the two in the budget.
Right.
Or out of the budget.
Yeah, that whole amount is not in here because there is an article for the lease, the 104,000 for the lease.
That's the following, that's the following article.
Yeah. So that one will automatically, the motion will be capital purpose one, so. And I will take care of, if it's all right with the boards and everyone, I'll take care of writing motions like I usually do so that they're on a single page and they're ready, available and easy to read to everybody. Individual, everybody will get it packed, including town council and the board.
And we'll have those for the next Monday, all hands on board?
All hands on board. We'll have motions already.
Okay. So selectmen, or we need to vote on recommending Article 12 to town meeting. This is the one that says to see if the town will vote to transfer from available fund the sum of money to retire or partially retire debt. So I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote to recommend that, John? So that'll be three of, on Article 12?
Three O's, yeah.
All right. So do you need anything else from us, FinCom?
When is your meeting to go over the warrant?
Noon next Monday. Town council will be here, town moderator will be here. There are two other sort of educational meetings that I wanted to mention to you guys. Town moderator is running a session at the library that was going to be on May 2nd, but it's been changed to May 9th at 10:00 a.m. The public's invited. It's an opportunity for them to get educated on any or all of the town meeting warrant articles. The Board of Selectmen, two weeks from tonight, on May 11th, at our regular meeting at 6:30, will also be holding a session so that people that want to come in and better understand what they're voting on before town meeting will be able to do that. You guys are, of course, welcome to any or both of those. And the goal instances to, particularly on some of these more complicated issues, to let the citizenry have a chance to fully understand what they're voting on.
Susan, are you scheduled to go to the library? I thought I had read your name.
She updated me as to the date.
Okay.
So you expect the warrant will go out this week in the mail?
No.
Oh, next, printer.
Goes to the printer in the midweek and then it gets turned around pretty quickly, but it should go out. I think the shooting print sometime next week.
So the expectation is voters will get this maybe a week before town meeting, next Wednesday?
We hope at least, as long as everything goes smoothly.
Having been a former member of the Finance Committee, I appreciate the intensity of the last few weeks for you guys. And we are very appreciative of your efforts.
Again, to say we're, we're also taxpayers here and we certainly have to do what best we can to the burden as reasonable as we can, given a lot of uncontrollable increases in the budget that we don't have discretion over.
Okay, anything else? Okay.
So Dale, you said, like sometime tomorrow, you think you can...
Yeah, I'm going to finish them up, just a few corrections we did today and, and I will, I'll send them to you. And the only one that hasn't been cleared through council was the land article, which I just sent tonight when I put that together. It should, it should, it should be fine. And if there's any change, I'll let you know. You're talking about going to printer, what, like Wednesday or something? Yeah, okay. I, I will just send you the cut and paste copy. If something changes, I don't think it'll change.
Town clerk had her hand up.
It will be a Word document, you said, right?
Yeah, yeah, always in Word.
I just needed to remind you that the special town warrant has to be posted by Wednesday at 5:00. So I'll need the signatures on the warrant for the special at least Wednesday. And then the annual town meeting warrant needs to be posted by the 6th, next Wednesday.
All right, so we need to sign the special?
So the yield has it ready. I'll need your signatures as well. And then I call the constable and have him post them.
So we'll be here on Wednesday?
We'll be here at 11:00 a.m., is that...
Perfect. I have till 5:00.
Okay.
And I will forward the legal copies to you so you can print them out in the legal sized format and, and then they can, they can serve us.
Legal format?
If legal sized.
Legal paper. They're eight and a half by 14.
Oh, for her, I'm sorry.
Just for the other day.
Yeah.
So the one you post need to have the FinCom recommendations in or it doesn't?
No, it's just this 11 signature.
You, you want an eight and a half by 11, fit your form.
Yes.
Yeah.
I do it both ways every year.
I just wanted to remind you because I need you around for at least two signatures by 5:00 o'clock to post it, have the constable post it.
With luck, we'll all be here Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. Can take care of, beautiful. So I actually...
Is that a budget thing?
Wednesday 11:00? That's not...
No, that's actually a, an executive session. We certainly can take care of signatures at that time. All right.
I actually did have one question. We had agreed to send this, the Public Safety Bulletin, to the newspaper. Is that something we pay for?
I think we're, that's, we're offering it as a news article, a flat paper.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure how to put it through.
Susan looked quizzical. Was it about that or something else?
Sorry, I have enough words. We're all ready on to the next word, Paul.
Always have to watch out when Susan looks quizzical. We have to resolve that tension. All right, I think actually the Board of Selectmen has completed all of its other business, so last chance for anyone to comment before we adjourn. Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're thankful for everyone here, people from the press, staff, thank you tonight.